All right. Good evening, afternoon. Welcome to the 4:00 PM work session of Lynchburg City Council. I'm Beau Wright. I'm sitting in for Mayor Dolan, who's unable to be here this evening, as like last time. We will start with a work session agenda overview by Mr. Benda.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Today during work session, you'll receive a briefing from our Utilities Director, Tim Mitchell. He's going to talk to you about a particular project and it's something to behold and what kind of undertaking there. Also, considering that we're amongst or amidst the holidays, I've asked Marjette Upsher, our city's Economic Development Director, to engage us on those upcoming events and what they may be for us. Then we're going to turn to the 2023 Legislative Agenda. I gave each of you a draft of it a week ago here, and then prior to that have put and sent you emails that show you 2022, you're adopted, and then the 2023. There are some changes in form and what it looks like, and so just want to make sure that we touch on it tonight and that the idea would be that we convene for the 14th, Monday, November 14th at 6:00 PM for the Legislative Dinner at University of Lynchburg to engage our local delegation, for them to give us feedback with the ultimate culmination of if it's your pleasure to adopt that Legislative Agenda on December 13th. You have two business item briefings, and before I turn it back, Mr. Vice Mayor, if it's okay, I sent you and your peers last evening an email about a polling place correction. And if it's to be helpful to the registrar, I thought to read it to you here so as to help amplify some of what she's trying to accomplish was there was a bit of a data transfer error that caused some people to believe that their polling place had changed when it had not. So I'll read that if it's okay with you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I have been made aware that a data transfer error in the city's GIS system has caused a miscommunication regarding polling locations in precincts 4-1 and 4-2 that affects approximately 400 voters on certain streets within those precincts. These addresses were notified by the Registrar's Office several weeks ago that their polling place, Sandusky Middle School and St. Thomas Moore Catholic Church, had changed when in fact it had not. As I understand it, the error was immediately corrected, and the Registrar's Office has notified by mail all affected addresses. The city's GIS records have been updated, and as I understand it, the Board of Elections has been notified. All redistricting data sent to the state is correct. If any affected voters have questions, they should contact the Registrar's Office for clarification at (434) 477-5999. Again, that number is (434) 477-5999. And I've since received, coming into chambers here, an update from the city registrar to specify just exactly those streets in those particular wards. The addresses impacted included 100 through 614 North Wind Circle, 1700 through 1815 Heritage Circle, 204 through 314 Forest Dale Drive. Those are those addresses. And hearing nothing else or anything from you, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll turn it back to you and your peers.
All right, we'll move forward then to the work session agenda items, and number one is the combined sewer overflow, CSO 52 Tunnel Project. And boy, this is really exciting. Mr. Mitchell.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on our CSO program and specifically CSO 52 project, and I'll get started with that. Just to refresh everybody's memory of what a combined sewer system is, typically the, well, a combined system is a single pipe that collects both sanitary sewer and storm water. And typically during dry weather, there's no issue. All that flow gets diverted to the Water Resource Recovery Facility, and there's no issues. But when we have a rainfall event, water also enters that system through downspouts and storm drains, and it overwhelms the system. So throughout our city, we have overflow points that relieve the excess flow, so it discharges a combined flow of sewer and storm water directly to the streams. So CSO was a state-of-the-art construction method back in the mid-1800s and early 1900s. So overall, throughout the nation, there's about 860 CSO cities. In Virginia, there's three, Alexandria, Richmond, and Lynchburg. Alexandria and Richmond have specific completion dates dictated by the General Assembly and recent General Assembly actions. Right now, we don't have a specific date that we have to be complete with our program, and we're still under a consent order, which is a financially-driven order. To date, we've eliminated 115 out of the 132 overflow points and reduced our overflow volume by about 93% and spent over $300 million on the program so far. The map on the left is important to note for a couple of reasons. The red dots are the CSO overflow points in the city. You can see they're kind of around the perimeter of downtown and the downtown area and along the riverfront. The combined area is the tan area or brown area, which is a little hard to see, but it's about 950 acres. Originally, when we started the program, it was over 6,000. Another important point about the map is the black dashed line, which is the boundary of the drainage area going to CSO 52. And this includes areas like Ward's Road, Lakeside Drive, Timber Lake, 221, and all the areas in between. So it's about 2/3 of the city, which is important. I'll mention that more in just a minute. This is a picture of CSO 52. It's along the Point of Honor Trail between Hollins Mill and downtown, and when rain, when we have a rainfall event, this activates. So these valves open up, and there's raw sewage and storm water going into the Blackwater Creek along the trail. One of the other problems we have in this area is also we have overflows at the manholes. So we have manholes, sewage coming out of the manhole tops. This overflow point is a permitted overflow point, so we can, it can stay in place, but we have to address the overflows coming out of the tops of the manholes as well. So we're not dealing with just a CSO compliance issue with this point. We're also dealing with a development issue. So rainfall events, as little as a six-month storm, can cause us to overflow. So technically, we don't have any capacity available in the sewer line. So if you go back to that map, the previous slide, we technically should be looking at limiting development and redevelopment within that black dashed area. So we really needed a holistic approach to fix the problem, to address the CSO issue as well as the development needs of that area. We looked at a number of options, which I'll go over here very briefly. First option we looked at was a parallel pipe. So this would be just another sewer interceptor, a large diameter sewer line that would be run parallel to the existing sewer line. The problem with this is in this corridor, there's really no space for another large sewer line. And it also does not address, through our modeling and studying of the system, does not address the development needs. So it would help alleviate some of the overflow at the CSO overflow point, but it does not completely eliminate the manhole lid issue and the sewage coming out of the manholes. Another option that we looked at was storage. We looked at building a big storage tank at various locations along the sewer line. The problem with that is, again, space is a big issue because we need about 4 million gallons of storage space. So if you've been to the wastewater recovery facility and seen those big, that big tank that we just built there, it'd be basically another one of those tanks somewhere along the sewer line and potentially buried, and there potentially could be odor issues and a number of other issues associated with that. And in conjunction with storage, we'd also, for a couple of those locations, we'd have to build a parallel pipe as well. We also looked at separation. This is what we've been doing up until the last 10 years, is doing complete separation, building a new sewer line and storm line in areas that are combined. So we would, in any area that was still combined that drained to CSO 52, we'd do a separation project. But this is the most costly option and still did not address the development needs. So finally, we looked at a deep tunnel, and a number of CSO localities are using tunnels to address their CSO issues. Both Alexandria and Richmond are using tunnels. Alexandria has started a very large CSO tunnel project. The tunnel itself would be about 4,300 feet long, 12 to 14 feet in finished diameter, and be about 70 to 100 feet in the ground. So it would be a massive project, and it would store about 4 million gallons of sewage. I'm not going to go through the alternatives analysis, but this is just illustrating the different options we looked at, the benefits of the options or drawbacks, the cost. And of these options, again, the tunnel option kind of rose to the top as the most, if you look at it from a cost per gallon of sewage eliminated standpoint, it was the most cost-effective. It's not the cheapest option by any means, but it's the most cost-effective from that standpoint, and overall has the biggest benefit from both the development needs standpoint and the CSO program standpoint. So one of the first things we had to do to determine if a tunnel was even feasible was to do some geotechnical work. So at various locations along the tunnel, potential tunnel alignment, we've already done some geotechnical work. This is borings into the ground about 100 feet deep, and with those borings, we need to look at the rock, because one of the things you want with a tunnel is you want it in, completely in rock. And it's kind of counterintuitive, but the rock gives structural integrity around the tunnel. So you build a tunnel in rock, and you want it in to, as a geotechnical engineer's term, competent rock. You want to below the weathered surface of the rock so that it's completely encapsulated in rock, and there's no issues with structural issues. Or another issue with tunnels is groundwater. You don't want a lot of groundwater entering the tunnel because then you have to deal with that and pump that as you're constructing the tunnel. And the results that we've gotten back from that geotechnical work is that we, it's very favorable for a tunnel to be constructed in this area. A project of this magnitude, though, definitely has its challenges. We'd have a small staging area. There were some areas where we had some site surface contamination that's since been determined not to be a significant issue. We were dealing with a couple of bridges, the railroad, floodplain issues, the river. There's also a geological fault in this area. Limited hydraulic head means that there's very little slope from one end of the tunnel to the next. Obviously, with a project like this, you'd have operations and maintenance ongoing and the costs associated with that, and then we'd have to acquire subterranean easements for any properties that we would cross under. And then schedule is another issue, and I'll get to that more in just a minute as well. So to build a tunnel like this, you first have to construct a shaft, and the shaft would be about 35 feet in diameter, 70 to 80 feet deep, and then it'd be concrete line to make sure that there's no rocks and debris falling into the structure, and that ultimately would be, become a pump station at the end of the project. And that's where the tunnel would start. So when you're looking at different construction methods of a tunnel, there's a tunnel boring machine that could be used. The problem, and I'll go into the pros and cons of both of these options in just a second, or drill and blast. So that would be basically hand excavation, hand mining of the tunnel with entire length. And I won't go through all these, but to hit the highlights, the advantages of a tunnel boring machine is that once you start, you can get, you can excavate 70 to 80 feet per day. So it's a very, a pretty, pretty fast process of moving the tunnel boring machine through the rock. And it's suited for long tunnels, over 4,000 feet. So we're right on that borderline of using a tunnel boring machine versus drill and blast. Tunnel boring machines, one of the problems with that is there's a long lead time to procure a tunnel boring machine. Most of them are manufactured in Belgium or Germany, and they're typically constructed for the project itself. And with a project like ours, more than likely, the tunnel boring machine would excavate beyond the end of the tunnel, and then it would just be buried and left there, because these big machines don't back up very easily. Drill and blast is, would be the more likely option that we would go with. It requires a smaller area to start off with, a smaller staging area. And then also, we could also follow the curve of the stream more easily with a drill and blast operation, so that might help avoid some easements and some other issues. So as I mentioned, drill and blast is probably the most likely issue, option that we would look at. These are just a few pictures of the drill and blast operation, kind of during the drilling, and then what the finished tunnel would look like. Another challenge that we'd have is we'd have to be able to get the sewage into the tunnel at the CSO 52 overflow point. So this is an option that we're looking at at that point. It's called a raised bore. So basically, the picture on the left is a boring head, but it would be moved into the tunnel at the location where we would want the drop shaft to be, and then it would be connected to a shaft at the surface and jacked upwards as the drop shaft is being This is basically what the downstream end of the tunnel would look like after the project is completed. The drop shaft would be converted into a pump station. You'd have to have an electrical building and access to the pumps. And there'd also be a diversion structure constructed here as well to, so that we could be able to divert sewage into the tunnel from both ends of the tunnel, which would potentially, looking at the CSO controls that we showed earlier on in the presentation, we potentially could even achieve a greater CSO control with that after we go through the design process. Just looking at the cost of the CSO program and the tunnel, right now, estimated cost to finish the program is about $86 million. The tunnel estimate is about $70 million, and then the combined, there's three other projects that we have to do to complete the program, and they range from four to seven million dollars. I'll caveat that with the fact that we're in a kind of an unpredictable environment now with construction and construction costs. We're seeing bids come in very much higher than we have seen in the past. Supply issues are an issue as well. So these prices could change, but based upon our estimates today, this is what the cost would be. Looking at our current funding, and many of you may remember, 2021 General Assembly Special Session, we received $25 million in ARPA funds. That was, in conjunction with that, we had to have a $25 million match, which we would use Virginia Clean Water Revolving Loan Funds as the match, and those are 0% interest loans or typically principal forgiveness loans, or portion of principal forgiveness. And then also, in the 2022 General Assembly Session, we received another $25 million. So that's a total of $75 million that we've got dedicated, or we soon have dedicated to the CSO program. The rest of the difference, the 11, additional $11 million, again, we're not on any timeline, so that could come at a future date or as our ability to fund those projects, as we do our budgets and in compliance with their consent order, those funds may be available as well. The big issue with the ARPA funds is the timeline. We have to have projects bid and close on the grant by December 24, and the projects must be complete or substantially, substantially complete by December 2026. So for a project of this magnitude, that's a very tight timeline. But looking at roughly at the schedule, we finish the geotechnical work by March. We expect to have the preliminary engineering report done, and then by November, the plan is to have the design complete and bid the project and start construction by March of 2024. And project complete by December 2026. And that's the end of the presentation. I'd be glad to take any questions or any comments.
A lot of questions.
Yes.
A couple, actually. So you mentioned that this is, the tunnel is for CSO 52. Of course, that's not the only CSO location that still needs to be closed, correct?
Well, CSO 52 overflow point would still remain open for an extreme weather event. This would address most of the overflows that would occur at that point, but it would still remain there, but the overflows would be extremely infrequent. It would just be a very big storm event that would cause an overflow there.
So the $86 million that you mentioned, is that for all the CSO work forever and on, or is that just for CSO 52?
No, that's all that we have to do to be in compliance with their consent order. So once we complete those projects, CSO 52 and the other three projects, then we're working with DEQ now, Department of Environmental Quality now, on what a post-construction, construction monitoring plan would look like. So after we complete the program, then we have to go back in and do sampling, flow measurement, and everything else to basically prove that the controls that we put in place were as effective as we said they were going to be. And if they're not, then we have to do, would have to do more. We're very confident, especially if we do this tunnel project, that we will have done enough to complete the program. But that process will occur after we finish the last project, and then we'll have ongoing monitoring forever, basically. But basically, we, there'd be a monitoring period that we'd have to do to prove that we've done enough, and we could call an end to the program.
You mentioned a moment ago about the sewer shed and concern about development within that sewer shed. Can you say more about that and how we should interpret that as, when we are thinking, for example, because we're, this discussion has been a live one lately about development in the city and where it happens and how?
All right. So again, this is the, the black dashed area is the outline of the sewer shed that drains to 52. And right now, we're having overflow events with as little as a six-month storm event along the, along the trail. And at this point, we have not, we're not under any specific orders from DEQ to address that problem. They're, basically, they're wanting us to finish our CSO program and see how that impacts the overflows along the trail. But based upon our analysis, we're still going to have a lot of overflows along the trail. At any point in time, though, DEQ could come in and say, because we're overflowing manholes along the trail, we have to shut down development. We could allow no new connections to the sewer line until we address the problem or have a plan to address the problem. So again, it's not something that we, especially a project of this magnitude, not something that we could do overnight. This is an opportunity to do it in conjunction with our CSO program and utilize the funding that we've received to help address the development issues as well.
Should that be a factor that we should be taking into account when making zoning decisions, especially for large developments, that it could potentially?
Not at this point. But again, if, that could change if DEQ became involved in that aspect of our operation as well.
Do they have a history of doing that? Is that something they tend to do?
There has not been a lot of development moratoriums that I'm aware of with DEQ, as long as the localities are taking reasonable efforts to address the issues, but there could be fines and other penalties associated with it if we don't address it as well.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Vice Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm always fascinated by your presentations, particularly because of the engineering that goes on with all of our city projects. I remember when the CSO separation was first initiated, I was a very young man, and there was discussion about how much progress the city was making and how soon we were going to complete it and comply with DEQ and EPA regulations. And then 10 years would go by, and suddenly, they moved, they moved the goalpost, and the standards changed, and suddenly, we had to have a much more robust plan to deal with what's been in the ground for over a century. Is it, the Vice Mayor has raised a good question as to how it impacts our decisions about development. My concern is, is it likely that the standards and criteria of EPA and DEQ are going to change such that what has been satisfactory will be antiquated simply because the rules have changed?
So we're hopeful not. I would think that, based upon my knowledge of our system, we'd have other areas that we would have to do, maybe do some more, looking at the map of those. There's 17 remaining overflow points in the system. I don't know for sure, but based upon my knowledge and my history of working with DEQ, there may be some additional controls that we'd have to do at some of these, those other overflow points. But if we do this project, we should be, it should give us a buffer of what we were, what we're supposed to do with our CSO program and where we ultimately end up. So we'll end up better than we have, than we agreed to do in our consent order. But again, the, another primary reason for that is to make sure that we have capacity for future development. If we don't do, if we don't do this project, like with the tunnel, then it's very likely that we, well, we don't have the capacity for future development.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the candidness of your answer. One of the other questions I have relates to the illustration that shows a tunnel inclined toward a water body, and then there's a tunnel or channel or large pipe that goes over to the treatment plant. And there's a dam constructed at the lower end of the tunnel that inhibits free flow into the body of water, except when there's a major flush, and it can then go over that dam. Is that correct?
Correct. An air system, the, that's an illustration, basically, but an air, and those overflow points are constructed differently with different cities and everything. Typically, for us, it's a manhole with a pipe that's at a higher elevation than the sewer line at the bottom. So when the manhole starts filling up with the combined flow, then it will go through that overflow pipe to the stream. So, but those overflow structures can be very simple like that or be very sophisticated. We have an overflow structure in Riverfront Park, for example, that has a weir and a bar screen that catches the solids and floatables, and then those solids and floatables fall back into the sewer stream after the overflow subsides. And then we also have another very complex and very heavily engineered overflow point, CSO 56, which is behind Piedmont Mills. It's a very unique structure. There's only one other like it in the world, for example. So again, they vary from very simple to very complex.
And the question was instigated because I'm looking at a diagram that has a specific element in the diagram that is referenced as a dam, but these are really risers and overflow pipes, not dams, way down in the tunnel?
Correct. Right. And this tunnel, basically, it would be, the tunnel, again, would be 70 feet, 70 to 100 feet below the surface of the ground, and in order to get the water out of the tunnel, we'd have to pump it. So basically, the, during a rainfall event, the water would be diverted into the tunnel. The tunnel would fill up, and then once the rainfall event passed, then the the tunnel would fill up, and then, once the rainfall event passed, then the pumps would kick on and pump the sewage that's in the tunnel back into the sewer line, and then it'd go to the wastewater plant to be treated.
My third question deals with that tunnel boring machine. That's fascinating. And you said that because of the difficulty in backing it up and pulling it out of the tunnel, it'll be left at some point. Would that be at the lower end toward the body of water, or would it be boring in the other direction and going uphill?
Excavation of the tunnel would essentially start at US Pipe and go towards Hollins Mill. So it would be, it would be left, potentially left in the ground at mid, near the CSO 52 overflow point, which is closer to Hollins Mill.
Is that boring machine necessary to construct the connection tunnel to the treatment plant, or is a large tunnel not necessary to complete that flow of water, or flow of stormwater?
Basically, the tunnel would end at the US Pipe, and there would be a pump station constructed there. So the tunnel would fill up, and then the pump station from there would pump it back into the existing sewer line that goes from that point to the wastewater treatment plant. So there would not need to be an additional pipe from that point to the wastewater plant. It would just use the same existing pipeline. But it would pump into that pipeline once the flows subside and the rainfall event has passed.
Intriguing. Thank you for that. That's all.
Have secured the 75 million.
There's one, there's one step in the process, I think Mr. Bendis is going to mention in a minute, but there's one other step in the process to secure that funding, but we do, we have 75 million available.
And so the additional 11, where are we thinking to get that from?
That would come, again, we don't have, we're not on a timeline. Once we commit to this tunnel project, we need to make it happen, basically, because that's where the $75 million would go towards, or the bulk of the $75 million. The other three projects, they're not on a specific timeline, but we, again, we'd look at that with their, each year with their capital projects imitable to see if we have enough capacity to borrow for that additional $11 million. With our CSO consent order, we have certain financial criteria we have to meet, and there may be enough debt capacity to borrow the additional $11 million as well.
Mr. Vice Mayor, did you want to add? Just if you remember, the timing of the state budget this past year was a little bit later than it normally is, and good news was that we received 25 more million from the state to help with this project. And so we have to accept that money by February timeframe, is that right? So at some point, at one of your impending meetings, there's going to be that provision to accept those resources from the state that will be applied to this project that Tim has brought before you.
Which would then in turn require that we find that 11 million additional, not at that time, but as we get into the project further.
Well, the tunnel project is about $70 million. And we already have some, the only thing that we're, the only funding that we're committed to right now is the $25 million match that was for last year's appropriation. There's no match with this current $25 million appropriation. So that doesn't obligate us to any additional funding beyond the $75 million.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're on item two, holiday events, and that is Ms. Upsher.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of council. Here to bring you tidings of great joy. How about the, I want to update you this afternoon on special events that are happening throughout the city during the holiday season to the end of 2022. And the list that we're providing you today, it includes both events that are permitted by our office as well as events that are open to the public. And these events, I just want to remind you are, let me see if I have this here. Metchie was going to, do I have a slide? Okay, no problem. Thank you. Anyway, we've passed the handout now. Everyone's caught up. I apologize. These events create economic impact, and they contribute to the quality of life in the city of Lynchburg. So we want to prepare our citizens and our neighbors in the region and our visitors to be prepared to shop, dine, and be entertained locally during this special season. And I just wanted to give you an example. As we look at these events, the Humankind Turkey Trot has been going on for 34 years now, and many cities across the nation have looked at how do they attract talent into their municipalities? And one of the easiest ways to do that is to try and reach out to those that have a connection, whether it be friends, family, or your alma mater, trying to convince them to come back home. And so we have used the Turkey Trot every year as a sponsor to tell Lynchburg's largest family reunion, when people come back for Thanksgiving, they're there, they come that morning. It is absolutely fantastic to run or walk early that morning. It's also for a great cause, and we are targeting them. So there's an element of workforce development and talent attraction even in our special events. So there was, years ago, I remember, sitting in a room, and Buffalo, New York had done a mass mailing campaign to the families of people that had moved away to try to attract that talent to come back. So that's one of the strategies that we use, is when the folks come back home, it's a fabulous crisp morning, there's not a lot of traffic, and you can think about perhaps taking one of the jobs that are open right now and coming back home. So I just wanted you to know, there is, there are a lot more than just a great special event. So please remember that this list, so it's broken down by permitted city special events, Parks and Rec, some of them aren't here yet, the mistletoe market, I know that Parks and Rec will be coming forward with what's going on at the community market, it just wasn't available yet, Amazement Square, the Academy, then the community events, everybody knows about, we'll have Small Business Saturday, and the Virginia Christmas Spectacular, that draws, you know, tour buses and everything, that's an unbelievable event. But we wanted the public to know that all these are lined up, and the Christmas Parade, I'll make sure I got it right, I just checked it again, it's on the 4th of December. And please know that things are subject to change. If anybody out there has events that they would like for us to post on the website, please get in touch, or you can find an updated list at LynchburgVirginia.org/events. Thank you.
Well, this is really cheerful. Dr. Wilder, did you want to say anything?
Just again, thank you for the information, the update. I think it's always such a great time in the Lynchburg area, and there's so many spectacular events going forth. I remember when I was, when I was working in Washington, I was home on weekends, but I was, had a case in Boston, and so I went back to Washington and caught a plane from DC to Boston, and the lady in front of me was, had been in Lynchburg, and she had came in for the Christmas spectacular at Thomas Road, and she was talking about, with the lady next to her, about how much she enjoyed it, how much she comes in from Boston every year for an event in Lynchburg. So I just thought it was so nice to see so many great events going on that attracts person from all over the country. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just one thing, I guess, just, you know, I appreciate this. I just had a business owner call me yesterday, and pretty disappointed and discouraged that economic development hasn't been really focusing on the job losses. We've got 1,000 jobs that we just lost, and we're, I mean, I appreciate the holiday events. I just, we need, what are we doing to actually attract companies? What are we doing to promote our economy? I think that's, I'd like that focus more than, you know, I appreciate the nice holiday events, but focusing on jobs and growing our economy would be my, I'd like to see a little bit more of, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dr. Wilder.
Yeah, I do remember when one of the companies left our community, we did get a report about what the economic development department was doing to attract more companies, to make sure our companies stayed, to see what support the city could offer for those. So we have been given some information about companies and about workforce, and how we, even with Tri-Tech, but KDC One, even in their departure, how we as a community could partner with them and get other persons employed, new training opportunities, you know, CDC is working on the company projects, break workforce development, to make sure those persons are retrained in that time period. So I have seen economic development do, be really strong in those efforts to help retrain workers, and also try to keep companies here and to see what a lot of those needs are. So I've seen, you know, some different sides, yes.
And I think both of those are well put, and I think it's one of those opportunities that while it was a communication to you and your peers to immediately meet the, what was happening and what we were doing, that could be something easily that we could bring forward to City Council and do here in chambers and talk through all the ways in which that we're trying to make Lynchburg that place that you relocate and start a business and/or retain you and keep you going. Absolutely. Thank you for both.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. We'll move on to item number three, the 2023 legislative agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council. In my remarks leading into this evening, I had told you that I've given you all last year's adopted legislative agenda and this year's draft agenda. And the process, or what I propose as a process is to, this evening, I have made certain decisions on those elements or aspects that we would want to highlight. Feedback that I hear from our local delegation is that there are literally thousands of bills annually that they have to put into play and/or manage as they're at the state assembly, and they want to know from you, us, what's of import for the city of Lynchburg. And so what I've attempted to do, working with Mercedes Braun, Metchie, she's worked with 17 departments and our constitutional officers and appointees and different people to say, well, what's really of import for the city of Lynchburg? And thinking through too, because we are now members of both Virginia First Cities and also Virginia Municipal League, and I don't know that you know, and probably many of you do, they too have packages that outline ad nauseam, those things that are important, particularly for the people that are members of those associations. And then, so what I've suggested by way of example here is to maybe separate out some of the stuff that's maybe carried by, for example, Utilities Director Tim Mitchell that was just before you, he has a body or constituents of folks that he's a part of, it's a group, they annually have certain things that they really marshal forward. So what I'm trying to do with this is to reflect, I hope, what's really important for our city and that we can get it before a delegation and before the state assembly. And so before you, in this evening, what I propose is the three key principles I outlined in my email to each of you, that, two of which were very similar to last year, one of which was recessed into the body, the emergency ECOs and temporary detention orders, TDOs, was something that you had highlighted last year. And so same thing this year, where I've made a determination under your initiative of public safety, is this one about 911 reclassification. I don't know that you are aware, but support for this classification, as a public safety first responder within the Virginia retirement system, is something that has been, would be beneficial. Right now, I'm carrying 14 vacancies in the Emergency Operations Center. I know that Melissa would have been here this evening, but she had some things come up, and that we're trying, even down to the literature that we use to attract different trainees into the program, using a bit more of a caricature approach that looks like a video game, because responders are younger and they're, they've been with tech and some other things. So this is another element or aspect that when thinking about making sure that that, we're competitive in that realm, because it's, it's a hard job. You have three different shifts, one of which is at midnight, you're receiving phone calls from people in distress, and so it can be one of those positions or jobs that are, that's tough. And so we're trying to think about all the ways in which to make it as attractive as possible. And so I'd offer as one of the key principles in talking to our local delegation, this would be one of those, this is from last year. The next two, I have Chief Zudma here, I'd ask him to, he's going to speak more to maybe an update on the ECOs and TDOs, and then also this swatting. I don't know that you've paid attention, but there's been a national occurrence, and I know that here within the Commonwealth, and remember in Southampton Roads and some other areas, there's some things that have happened where we've gotten a 911 call or some kind of other communication, that something's happening and that they go into a lockdown. And so in this assembly, there's a movement by several localities, to include, I'd offer the city of Lynchburg to address this. And so if I may, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd turn it over to Chief Zudma to talk about these next two.
Good afternoon, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. As you know, you've heard me at this podium many times talk about ECOs and TDOs, and what we're trying to do is change the legislation very simply so that law enforcement officers are responsible to go to the crisis, stabilize that situation, keep the individual who's in crisis safe, any other family members, neighbors, whoever, friends that are around them safe, and get that individual to a place for mental health treatment. We do that right now. The downside is that after that, unfortunately, we are then, in many cases, standing by with that person who's in crisis for hours and in many cases, days. We've seen someone as young as four-year-old, a four-year-old child that we've sat with, and as old as 93 that we've sat with. And so the goal of this legislation is to basically force the state to put some type of structure in place that would allow someone other than a sworn law enforcement officer to sit with that patient while they're under an ECO, as well as sit with that patient to transport them to, you know, various localities around the state for mental health treatment. Again, that we have seen, and you've seen the numbers I've shown you before, but a rough estimate over the last, since about 2016, we spent very conservatively over $2 million of our taxpayers' money to fund officer salaries to sit with mental health patients. So our goal is to work with the state, we've been working with our state legislative folks here in this region and through a variety of other avenues to try and get us. We are one of the very few states in this country that take this approach to mental health with, using law enforcement. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
Dr. Wilder, have you seen any movement with legislative last year? I know it was one of our agenda items last year, have there been any movement at all?
So we've got a lot of success with Senator Newman, who has pushed several different bills forward. Some of those have increased funding to localities, which is good, but very honestly, that funding is a Band-Aid on an arterial bleed. That is helping some, but funding is not as strong of the issue, it's just the design of the system. He's also put in a bill that is going to allow for localities, sheriff's offices and police departments to hire part-time folks to fill some of that need. But again, that is just dealing kind of with the symptoms and not really with the problem. So, but he's been great to work with, as well as other legislators in our area to really push the need forward.
One follow-up to what Chief Zudma before too as well, is Centra has been very supportive of this, in that they want to be part of the solution. And I know that Senator Newman reflected both of us as far as to agree that we can create something particular, if it's, if there's a solution to be had and we can figure it for Lynchburg, that helps him in his efforts at the state level. And so I think we've done what we can with Centra to be as creative as possible, and we'll keep pushing that way.
We continue to work with Horizon as well. I appreciate the mention of Centra. Horizon's been a great partner of ours to try and address some of these needs and looking at some other areas too, again, where we can ultimately better serve those individuals in our community that are in mental health crisis.
If I might, I'm speaking on behalf of Horizon's being on the board, I do know that there are things in the works for the capacity issues, for example, a bed in the hospitals, a bed that is being occupied by someone in this instance, as opposed to someone who has a serious issue that needs to be in the hospital for, not putting a slight on the mental issue, but there needs to be a specific place for those folks to go. And that's something that I think is being looked into with some of the funds that were secured by Senator Newman.
Dr. Green?
I think you've answered my question. I just wondered why the state was not able to be more responsive in this, I mean, giving, you know, gratitude for what has been given. But I just wondered if it's a problem across the state with other officers and localities, and we're talking about task force against violence, needing more officers on the street. I'm just wondering if there's a correlation there and?
To answer one part of your question, this is definitely, you know, I talked to sheriffs and chiefs around the Commonwealth, and they're seeing all the same changes. around the Commonwealth and they're seeing all the same challenges that we are here. It is a, my opinion, it is a massive overhaul of the system is what we're talking about. We're not talking about just changing slightly. We're talking about investing and having the infrastructure in place to do what needs to be done. And, you know, right now, you know, as we tell you, we're transporting individuals in mental health crisis, you know, four hours away to all corners of this state. And I think the reality is, is we need to have some local options for that. But that that comes with a pretty significant infrastructure investment in facilities, in personnel, in staff. And I know they're dealing with some of the same challenges that a lot of us are with hiring folks in the climate we're in right now. But I won't say, you know, they certainly not turned a deaf ear to it. I just don't know that there's been enough momentum behind it to really put the amount of money that needs to go into truly overhauling. Our mental health system is broken. And when I say broken, I mean tragically broken. When we have a person who's in mental health crisis who sits for six days in a hospital with a police officer and gets no mental health services, that's unacceptable. And so I think it's a huge issue that the state needs to try and fix. And I don't think it's one that gets fixed overnight. This is probably a multi-year problem, multi-year solution rather to a problem.
You know, and I'd really, you know, I know, you know, the olden days, how things used to be versus what they've done now, you know. Famous economist always says, the problems of today are directly related to the government solutions of ten years ago. And you see that very evident on numerous things, you know, when somebody, one of your officers brings in somebody to the hospital, it's drastically changed. I mean, it used to be bring them there, drop them off and get back on the street. And so, you know, the funding issue, I mean, typically Centra or the hospitals that are actually taking in these patients, that's where the security should be. I mean, for example, if you bring somebody to the Blue Ridge Jail Authority, you don't sit there with them all day. I mean, you transfer them. And so the thing needs to be the same. And, you know, I think what we've done is made things much too bureaucratic. I remember Senator Newman had a great bill several years ago. Creed Edes had a different one and that's the one that got passed. And some of these things need to be changed. I mean, it shouldn't be just, you know, overhauling with just another huge price tag of a solution. Just needs to go back to some common sense, you know, where you guys can, your officers can bring them in when there's a threat and get back on the street where there's shootings running rampant every day, where there's robberies happening, be it back on the street and rather than sitting there as though you're a clinician or something or a security guard, you know. So.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do you want to touch on swatting as well?
I sure can. So swatting is is something, if you're not familiar with the term, but it's basically someone somehow communicating a false threat or false emergency that may be going on, that the term came from usually the threat that has relayed results in some type of a SWAT team or a tactical unit having to respond because the threat is alleged to be so severe. So this could be like an active shooter or, you know, we recently saw this at EC Glass, you know, just, you know, a month and a half ago or so, along with, you know, roughly twenty other localities in our Commonwealth that had a similar call to where, you know, we were told that there was potentially, you know, someone in the school with a gun and not a student, but someone who was going in to actively harm folks. So the goal of this legislation, and there's several different versions that are already out there, and we've been in communication, I know Metchi has and I have through the Chiefs Association and others, but the goal is to try and really kind of solidify this law a little bit more and give some additional options. There's some of it is just very honestly, the law has not kept up with the technology. The law currently says you have to call in a threat. Well, very few people in the younger generation use a phone to actually make phone calls anymore. They use it to use apps or to use text messaging or things like that. So we want to update that to make sure that it captures those as well. A lot of 911 centers or public safety answering points, PS apps, now receive text to 911. Some actually receive video in some areas, 911. So we want to make sure it captures all that. And then we want to make sure it also counts for if if Dr. Tweedy was to call Mr. Nelson and tell Mr. Nelson something that's going on that she knows to be false to get Mr. Nelson to then call 911 and capture that. And some of the law right now is a little ambiguous there. So the goal of this is to clean all that up and to hopefully deter folks because it is a significant resource drain as it was at EC Glass for us to send the number of officers that we need because we cannot ever err on the side of, well, this is just a hoax. We have to assume every call like that is the real deal and send the appropriate amount of resources. So hopefully this law will clean that up and hopefully deter folks and when people still choose to do these types of things, we can hold them accountable for.
Counselor, one thing would be good to add, I've recognized and I've heard from some very good families with regarding people calling child protective services as kind of more of a retribution because their dog was barking too late and recognize that they could say, oh, we'll we'll put them on there. And some really good families that I know fed visits. And it's just, you know, that kind of thing. Hopefully that can kind of coordinate when you're making false claims like that, getting an enforcement agency that comes out there when it's not warranted. So.
Thank you very much. Counselor?
I have my directly related to this, and one colleague says something to contain on this, right?
On the website of the agenda. Any other comments on swatting? Thank you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Green.
Well, I'm just, I have just a question. Because Councilmember Higginson brought it up. Is there anything that we should be putting forward for you all to support what we're seeing in this uptick of shootings and random robberies?
Yeah. So, you know, I think the, you know, the proof is in the pudding with numbers, right? That I will tell you that, you know, overall, and I'll pull them real quick here, and I believe you guys get this sent to you monthly, but, you know, we overall in the last twelve months, what I like to compare our numbers to is a five-year average because I can I can always go find a month that had a really low number, a really high number and say, I'm either doing really bad or really great, right? So a five-year average is what we like to look at. Overall violent crime compared to our five-year average over the last twelve months, we're actually down about 5%. Okay. Now, with that being said, there are other areas, as you know, that are elevated, right? Our gun crimes are elevated right now, right? And those are up. Certainly our murders are higher than they have been in the past. So to answer your question, Dr. Tweedy, I think, you know, the biggest thing that we still continue to struggle with is getting cooperation from witnesses and in many cases, unfortunately, victims. It is not uncommon for us to have someone who was shot who doesn't want to tell us what happened, right? And I understand there's a lot of dynamics that go into that. I understand there's concern for fear and retribution. And I, you know, I encourage folks to remember that we have anonymous ways that they can report that, you know, through Crime Stoppers, through our Concerned Reliable Citizens Program, to bring that information to us so that we can then use that to piece the puzzle together without having to require that individual who provided it to be identified or to come to court and testify. So, you know, we certainly want to encourage folks in the community to do that. Obviously, some of our challenges with staffing is, as you know, to try and make sure we're allocating our limited resources to areas that they can have the most impact. And certainly violent crime is the priority of my list amongst many other things. But so anything that we can do to encourage the community, as you all are out in the community, to to make sure, you know, it's a cliche term, unfortunately, sometimes, but if you see something, you need to say something. And, you know, how I like to relay that to a lot of folks who are a little hesitant is, you know, if that was your family member that was a victim of that crime, what would you want someone to do if they had that piece of information that could help us solve that? So I hope that answers your question.
It's pretty more broadly, I skimmed through it. If I missed it, please correct me. But I would be interested in adding some language, particularly within the top guiding principles of increased funding from the state to the common law's attorney's offices. I think that's a need that we've been informed of to a very fine point and the necessity for prosecuting crimes. I don't want to send our officers into the court system without that backup. And I think if we can find a way to incorporate increased funding to common law's attorney's offices without the locality also having to pitch in, would be worth exploring. Similarly, with increased state compensation for teachers without a local match, they're rolling in cash. I mean, so is the city, as we all know. But with billions of dollars in excess revenue, I think that's something we as a council would unanimously get behind. And then we currently do have language in there regarding unfunded Band-Aids. I think just given the the dynamic politically speaking that we're in, I'd be interested in including that in in our top priorities. I think we need to make it known to the state that, look, when you are passing a policy that is forcing us to take revenue from Peter and give it to Paul, it's it's putting us in handcuffs to a degree. And so any way we could incorporate that to the to a higher priority is something I'm interested in.
Thank you, Councilmember. I still have a really good point. How would you like to offer feedback to staff on what's proposed here? So a couple of different ways. You're welcome to this evening. Wasn't really pushing you to, I just wanted to make sure that I broached it with you this evening. We do have a trajectory where on Monday, November fourteenth, you're meeting with the local delegation. That'll be a time in which that you can respond and talk to one another as well. December thirteenth, I've positioned it as a potential date in which that you can vote. Now, throughout, the one communication that I sent to you and your peers was always open to your feedback or input. This afternoon, we will post to the city's website a link to the legislative package with a communication for the public to send comments to Mercedes Braun so that we can capture those. We did this last year as well. So there are many different ways in which to do so, not simply for your peers, but also for our constituents and residents. No, no, please, no, this is super helpful.
You know, so with that and what you said, that our delegation's got thousands of bills and focusing, I think, would be a lot better. I mean, this is thirteen pages of lots of stuff that are, you know, it'd be nice for us to really focus on something that they want to do versus, you know, this one thing, the sidewalk bank. You know, lots of these different things, I probably would say, you know, is that really something that we want to say, force somebody to put in the sidewalk, you know, like the sidewalk to nowhere concept, and then force them to pay for it? And then, oh, by the way, you know, we'll put money to go for somebody else. That's, one, I want us to get rid of these sidewalks to nowhere already, which you have a public hearing tonight where we're going to be forcing a church to spend about a hundred grand on putting in a sidewalk where there's no other sidewalk that connects. You know, I understand the sidewalks, but I think that is something we need to, we need to really kind of be be thinking about that, you know, especially when there you have a church that's trying to do good. And now you say, hey, instead of actually having a hundred thousand for your program, we're going to make you put a sidewalk that doesn't connect to any other sidewalks. The only people that are going to walk on the sidewalk are, none of the people that go to the church are going to be walking back and forth on the sidewalk. So anyway, having sidewalks in here that way. So there's lots of, so we don't, do we want to be talking about all these different items today? Or are we going to be just send you and then be, I'd like to see this shrunk tremendously, personally.
Wonderful. What I'd say is I'm very careful. This is my second assembly and I last year dipped my toe into the water to say, we do, and I mean this with love, so anybody that's previous, sorry, we do a bit of a kitchen sink approach. And I don't know that it's effective for the city. And so I, without maybe going too fast, too far, too quickly with with you and your peers, tried to do the key three principles. So super helpful for Councilman Feraldi to say, of these other things, I'd like to highlight this as of import for us. And so what I'm giving you is a complement of things and there's about three sections in there that is this year's what the staff would propose. There are ongoing pieces that are just before the assembly and they're dealing with. And then there's the third piece is kind of things that we've accomplished. So what I'd ask is that if there are, you know, things that come from the dinner and/or from your constituents, what have you, that you want to elevate and make it call it the top five, the top three, the, I don't want to prescribe any kind of number, that is super helpful for for me and staff when we're working with the local delegation about the impending assembly. So yes, I'm with you on it. I just didn't want to go too far, too fast and there feel like, well, wait a minute, there was this document previously that had a wealth of things and my thing is not in there. So this is...
Or a page, we're looking at saying, hey, let's give them a page or two, kind of thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I love it. Great idea.
So you could have the two. It's almost the white paper that comes on top of something to say, this is what Lynchburg really, really, really supports.
You've got to recognize who you're giving it to and 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 it's, you know, if it's a laundry, if you got a bunch of conservatives and you give a laundry list of, you know, liberal ideas, it gets looked at and tossed in the trash. And conversely, the same thing would happen if it's, you know, I mean, it's...
Graduation is absolutely...
Yeah, exactly.
Successful. I agree.
Thank you very much. Anything else on this?
I just wanted to make a point again about Monday, November fourteenth at 6:00 PM at the Drysdale Student Center at University of Lynchburg. That'll be our legislative dinner. We've invited Michelle Gaudy, she's the Chairman Exec of the Virginia Municipal League. And then you'll remember the economist that we had last year, Jim Regenball, who was also works not simply for Virginia First Cities, but also VML, he'll be there as well. And so the hope or opportunities for them to kind of give us a what to expect kind of conversation, similar to what we did last year, and then afford you and your peers, the local delegation, opportunity to to talk about Lynchburg and the state assembly. And hopefully there'll be some really good food. So with that, Mr. Vice Mayor, that concludes unless there are other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Appreciate it.
We will move on then to the business item briefings. And the first is filming on public property. This item will appear before City Council for action on December thirteenth, 2022. And I believe that's Ms. Benson.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of council. As you just said, this will appear on your general business agenda on December thirteenth. The Office of Economic Development and Tourism encourages filming in the city of Lynchburg to drive economic development, tourism and publicity for the city. Staff works with those wishing to film on city property through an application process and coordinates and shares information with any impacted departments, including police, fire, risk management, parks and recreation, community development and public works. If filming occurs in a city park, Parks and Recreation issues a simple use permit. Other locations are issued permission by the Office of Economic Development and Tourism. A certificate of liability insurance listing the city as additional insured is required for all wishing to film on public property. The city attorney has recommended that an ordinance be in place to support this process. Couple notes about definitions. Filming or film means the taking of motion pictures done for any purpose on public property with the intention that such motion pictures be viewed by the general public and academic institution or at a film festival. Filming should not include news made by a lawfully organized news or media entity, taking of motion pictures pursuant to the authority of the federal, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, or taking of motion pictures for personal, non-commercial purposes, like a social media account, for example, a personal account. And this is just a list of just some general requirements for filming. I won't read all of these, but all filming conducted in orderly fashion, you know, keeping the sidewalks clear. Use of firearms or replicas is prohibited. The use of explosives or fireworks is prohibited. It should not interfere with the city's emergency services. And then filming shall conform to all applicable laws, regulations and ordinances. That's all. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Councilmember Higginson?
You know, I guess just as I mentioned earlier, you know, I'd really like to see, you know, the Office of Economic Development focusing on the jobs rather than setting up a new, you know, a new ordinance. It's, I think lots of people could film and that'd be fantastic. I know that this is kind of almost like a, you know, they could film now. And now we have a new, kind of like a bureaucratic ordinance, ordinance that says, here's all the things you have to do. So anyway, just my two cents.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Feraldi?
Where did this come from?
We have had a process in place to grant permission for filming just to make sure that people are, you know, using parks or sidewalks, you know, in use with other uses, you know. The city attorney asked that we memorialize this as an ordinance to support that process.
I would add to what Ms. Benson was saying. So there has been an informal process where economic development has issued permits or permissions to basically keep track of and ensure the safety of public property in the city. As part of that process, insurance certificates were required, namely, or what they tried to aim for, was ensuring that if there was damage to property or there was injuries, that the individuals that were responsible had insurance to cover the actions that they were responsible for. This was brought to our attention, basically, I think it was a citizen who had brought forth the fact that there wasn't really an objective way for the city to be able to say, well, what if I just want to video my family at a park? Does that mean I have to get an insurance certificate? Well, there was no objective way of determining that. So under the city's power to police its property, ensure the safety of the community, this was a resolution that I and several other departments had worked together on to try to have an objective outlined process to account for applicable exceptions while also ensuring the safety of public property and encouraging filming.
Thank you both. This hearkens back some memory with Dr. Ferg...
This hearkens back some memory with Dr. Fordon in government class in college, where the intention of government is one thing, and then the outcome may produce a different effect, and the two may not be married. The reason I'm saying this is, so, my, my mind rolls, we're in a political season, I go to a park, and I film an ad, and then I share it as a Facebook ad on Facebook. Well, by this ordinance, would I be required to get, go through this process before submitting that campaign material? That's a question. Similarly, if I am, if we're not putting a fee and a mandate behind doing it, what's the point except to make a point? And if we're saying, hey, you've got to, you can't film on public property without following this to a T, what's the punishment outside of the fact that we're just saying, hey, you just got to follow this? There's no, there's no penalty, there's no fee to administratively do this. That was another thought of, of mine. There's a lot of subjectivity, at least in my interpretation of this. I've said it often, I'm no attorney, but I live in this field a little bit. All filming shall be conducted in an orderly fashion. Well, if I'm filming a zombie walk, which we've done, that might be a challenge. The use of explosives or fireworks, we sponsor fireworks downtown for, and then we film it, and then we use it in economic development to produce it for ads. That's a conflict. Why is the city filming explosives or fireworks and then using it to, just, these are just things that roll through my, my own mind when, when I read through this. So, I could go into deeper, I, I think the intent is good. I believe, looking back, I may have initiated the email back and forth with this constituent, as a matter of fact, so that's partially why I'm speaking to this. I think this is a good step in the right direction, although may not be meeting the direct intent as to what we need to do. And let's certainly be mindful for asking folks to, you know, not use fireworks or explosions if we're doing it ourselves. But I think in a comical way, you understand my perspective on this for, for the moment. Thank you for, for getting us this far.
I could provide some clarification for City Council, and they're all legitimate concerns Mr. Feraldi had mentioned. The first component that he had mentioned was the idea of whether filming would be subject to a permit of a, just an individual out filming in the road or wanting to engage in filming for non-commercial reasons, that is specifically not for purposes of making money, just to post it on their personal social, social media, et cetera. That is excluded from the definition of filming, which is shown in the ordinance. The idea was obviously, at least in my estimation, to be able to ensure that individuals' First Amendment rights to be able to do that, who were engaging in personal activities, weren't subject to the ordinance. As far as the penalties, I suppose if we, if we looked at it stringently, and we wanted to enforce this on someone, we could use the provision in the city code that speaks specifically to when provisions for penalties aren't provided for in a specific ordinance. There is an ordinance that we have that speaks to what penalty that would be imposed. I think that's actually a class one misdemeanor, but it's my understanding that the idea behind this ordinance is just to solidify what the current process is, and no way is anyone to be punished for filming in the city. It's just to allow citizens to understand what is expected of them and, and what is needed from them as it relates to trying to film on the city's property.
I think broadly, I would agree, if I may just respond briefly. I, broadly, I, I agree. I think the challenge I run into is if I film on public property and then turn that into some form of a marketable, tangible product, even though it might be for a nonprofit, per se, you're, you're using a commercial aspect to it, and that's when it turns into not being a private entity, and I'm actually using a video of myself as a selfie and putting money behind it to target people to get them to do something. And I think, in that case, that's, that might be a vote. I'll even, I'll double down, like, so now we're saying you can't use drones. Well, is that flying over public space, or is that only on public space? You can't use drones, can't do fireworks. I'm pretty sure we do both when we're filming to get down, like, the fireworks on Fourth of July. So, thank you, I agree. I think we just need to be a little bit more intentional, maybe, in how we word some of this. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, I wanted to follow up on that real quick before I turn to Councilmember Helgason, which is, you know, makes me wonder if the juice is worth the squeeze by being so prescriptive that it actually raises challenges and barriers for people. Specifically, I'm thinking, so, I guess a question that if, let's say, Lynchburg is a historic city, let's say I wanted to film a movie about the Civil War here, right? And they're, you know, carrying Civil War weapons, and they're shooting a scene on Church Street. Is that negotiable? And then if so, let's say, let's say the city was otherwise okay with it, how would we, do they have to come to council? How is that arbitrated, for example?
I would submit to City Council, these, these are all, as I understand it, current requirements the city requires to be able to film in the city. So, these aren't arbitrarily created. So, I, I think, I think what, if this is something City Council wished, wished to pursue, certainly, you know, there is a way to allow for, say, discretion to be allowed for by the Department of Economic Development, you know, subject to the appeal to the city manager, say it was, it was denied. You know, I think that's a great point as it relates to the Civil War reenactment or for, for fireworks. A lot of these, I, I think, like I had said, they're more informal requirements that, that the department imposes upon someone seeking the permit. They've just never been codified to where they're enforceable, if that makes sense.
I would understand why we wouldn't want to limit the city's liability, you know, by not, you know, we don't want to sweep people going out and setting off fireworks on the lawn of City Hall while they're making their film because they didn't get a permit, when they're not aware of the process. I can understand that, but some sort of discretion, I agree, would, sounds like it would be, would be useful here, you know, because if it's an ordinance, if it's enacted by law, then I would be concerned that folks wouldn't understand that actually there was some wiggle room. Councilmember Helgason.
And so, he asked, does council want to proceed with this, and I don't, quite frankly. You know, because I see this kind of more of as a solution in search of a problem. I mean, I, I see this as all the different things that Councilmember Feraldi and the Vice Mayor just mentioned, you know, with the, the fine points. And I also understand how things work. You know, right now it says, no administrative fee shall be required. You know, I just understand how things always work. Right? I mean, you chuckled because you know exactly what I'm going to say. Starts out, hey, we'll pick up your trash, it's included in your trash, in your property taxes. Well, we're going to add just a little bit. Well, we're going to add a little bit more. Well, we're going to add this humongous thing, and so, I just, I think it's a, what I would like us to see is encourage people to come here and do some films and record all the wonderful historical things, the Civil War, the, all the different items, and not have to go through another bureaucratic red tape.
Very good.
All right. I guess that's what I've asked, Mr. Vice Mayor, is if, if City Council wants this to come back, and if so, if it were to come back, is including the clause for allowing for discretion, for exceptions by the Director of Economic Development, subject to appeal of the city manager, something you all would want to see. I certainly don't want to, to bring this back if that's not something you all would want.
Maybe the year 2024. I think my, my recommendation to council would be that, that the city attorney, taking the feedback received this evening, perhaps revisits the draft ordinance, tightens it up, and then brings it back to council later date, would be my recommendation of that.
At a much later date, I would suggest.
At the city manager's, when he finds space for perhaps in the October. Very good. All right, well, then we will move ahead to, thank you very much, Ms. Benson. We'll move ahead to great Orthodox rezoning. This item will appear before Council for Action on December thirteenth, 2022, and that's Ms. Frisheisen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. The purpose of this petition is to rezone the property at 3300 Carroll Avenue from I-2 Light Industrial District to B-5 General Business District to allow the expansion of the existing church to include the construction of a covered deck. The church has been in operation at this site since at least 1955, and it's currently considered a legal non-conforming use in the I-2 district. The future land use map recommends institutional uses for the property. These areas include religious, educational, and other nonprofit entities in the city. Rezoning to B-5 would bring the use into conformity with our zoning ordinance and allow the expansion of the church as desired. Planning Commission recommended approval of the petition at their meeting on October 26th.
Comments, questions? Councilmember Helgason.
So, when you spoke with the church, hopefully you, everything in life has got pluses and minuses. So, as they are currently, it's a non-conforming use, but it's perfectly legal because that's the way it's been. So, now, are there any maybe unintended consequences that you needed to share with them, like if they do want to expand? Like, for example, in the front of their building on Carroll? Or, no, not on, on Mayflower, I believe. Oddfellows, Oddfellows, there's sidewalks there. But if they're going to go the other direction on Carroll, is this something that they would have to now? I just want to make sure that you, you shared with them some of the unintended consequences of going from I-2 to a B, to a B-5.
Well, so, industrial districts aren't subject to exclusion from, I think you're referring to the sidewalk ordinance. I mean, we do have exemptions for things like grade, or, you know, if there's like a stormwater channel, like a ditch, that makes sidewalk construction not feasible. However, as it is now, they would be subject to the same requirements if they went over the threshold of, of a sidewalk.
They will expand their sanctuary.
Right.
Under an I-2.
They, oh, so they can't, the reason for the rezoning is they're non-conforming, and you can't expand the non-conforming use.
Okay.
So, so the rezoning is proposed to allow them to expand.
Got you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right, well, we will move then into roll call, and out of respect and deference to one of our colleagues, I'm going to start on the other end of the dais, Mr. Feraldi.
Please come back to me. Thank you.
Dr. Wilder.
All right. I just want to congratulate the, the One Community, One Voice and the Police Cat Team. They were out there at Miller Park last night in the rain, passed out candy to kids in our community. I'm just so wonderful to see our community work together to better our community. The Cat Team has been very active with One vs. One Community, with the Police Department, with Sheriff's Office, with Fire, all the others have been really forceful in coming up monthly at various other events in our community. We did talk about a shooting the other day. We had two shootings this week, but they continue to do, make inroads in our community. Those are the, all of us working together to address situations as far as violence or shootings for the churches, the synagogues, the faith community, parents. Like Officer said, make sure you talk to your kids, make sure you, if you see something, say something, you know, for witnesses, nature. So, it's a community situation, a community problem that all of us need to address and work together to solve. Also, become mentors and big brothers to our kids in our community through Big Brothers or Jubilee or Boys and Girls Club, or various other places where you can give back. So, I want to encourage our citizens to do that. Also, on this Wednesday, it starts the Mustache for Kids. They raise funds for kids in our community. Hopefully, Turner Apparel will join us again this year. If not, you can give to one of those who do it. But again, they raise about, I can't remember, about $300,000, $400,000 every year. Chief does it, his mustache is amazing, he grows them off. But, so maybe you can get some of the other deputy assistant city managers, everybody else to participate, but about a hundred plus men shaved, shaved their beards and mustaches off and grew up for 30 days. And it's amazing how they raised like $300,000, $400,000 in 30 days. I mean, it is amazing what we do in our community. It shows how we have such a great caring community, and it's all for children's services. So, make sure you try to think about that. And also, Friday, there's a pancake jamboree, and several of us will be cooking pancakes on Friday. I think it's from six or so to seven, I believe. So, again, another great organization is giving back to the community, showing love like Lynchburg does. Great excitement about that. And as far as the Mustache for Kids is on Wednesday at Star Hill on Main Street from 4:30 to 9:00. Men can come and sign up at that event, it'd be really great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilder.
Thank you, Mr. Frisheisen. You know, I know we kind of mentioned it briefly earlier today, but crime. I mean, the crime, oh, it's just heartbreaking. You watch the news every day. I mean, it's another shooting. Today, we watched three shootings in the last three days at Birchwood Apartments, and you watch, you watch the news coverage, and you see the little numbers all over the, which probably means 41 empty casings. You know, you look at the James Crossing shooting, Cabell Street last night, and then you listen to a single woman that was interviewed on the news, kind of broke my heart. You know, when she says, I don't want my kids to be going outside without an adult. With that, we, we have got to empower, I mean, things are happening at the rotten from, you know, some of this national malarkey that's happened. It's coming here, and we, this, this, it breaks my heart. You know, one thing that we do have that I hope these single women trying to protect their kids, that we don't have any kind of negative impact to say, hey, you got to pay this, the highest fee in the state for your concealed weapon permit to defend yourself and your family. You know, that's something that we probably ought to think of. Another, as I mentioned earlier, which we'll talk about tonight, which I'd really like for us to see what we can do about the sidewalks to nowhere. I mean, that's, really, that's another one that, you see a church, as Councilmember Wilder just said, what can we do as the community and the faith community coming together? When you've got a faith community and a church that now has to divert about a hundred grand to put in a sidewalk that nobody's going to walk on, I'd rather see it going either to the building or going, you know, so anyway, I just, I, I know the whole purpose of it, but the sidewalks to nowhere, if there's ability to, you know, figure out something different than just requiring somebody anytime they want to expand their sanctuary, you got to, you know, you're already on a shoestring. So, if we can discuss that at some point, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Tweedy.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the city attorney about personal interest and conflict of it for lobbying for varying policies and regulations by council members. I don't know what that is, but if you could bring any type of legislation or regulations about that, I would like to see that. Thank you.
Mr. Feraldi. No items? Mr. Helgason.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, colleagues, citizens. City Council has many responsibilities, but crafting the annual budget is arguably the most important of its duties. City Council traditionally starts formulating its annual budget each February. When local elections were held in May, newly elected council members took office in July, at a time when council's summer agenda was light and the budgeting process was many, many months away. Because local elections are now held in November, newly elected council members will assume their respective offices in January, thereby immediately placing weighty budgeting responsibilities on non-incumbent council members who may have little or no practical experience on City Council. That is one of the many reasons why I opposed the Virginia General Assembly's ill-conceived mandate to move all local elections to coincide with the November general election. Because I did not seek reelection to City Council, next Tuesday's election will determine the successor to my vacated seat on this dais. I want that successor, whoever it is, to be oriented and qualified as soon as possible to undertake the responsibilities of this office and not delay that process until January 2023, which would be on the eve of City Council's 2023 budgeting process. Orientation to the duties of service on this council is neither quick nor easy. I believe the orderly, non-contentious, courteous, and respectful transfer of political office for. from one elected office holder to the next is essential to ensure the survival of our nation's constitutional system of representative democracy. Likewise, as an old coach, I often use sports analogies to illustrate a point. In that context, I view Lynchburg and this City Council, quote, as my team and our team. I view myself as a player on our city's team. And as a team player, I feel a responsibility, no, a duty, an obligation, to help whoever takes my position on our team to be as well-prepared as possible to confront our team's challenges before the tough competition of the 2023 budgeting season begins in February. Our team's success may depend on it. If my position on City Council is vacated next week, City Council can call a special meeting to expeditiously appoint one of the newly elected non-incumbent victors in that election to fill my vacancy, at a time after Lynchburg voters have made their choice, but well before the budgeting season begins next year. Therefore, I announce my resignation from Lynchburg City Council to be effective at noon on Monday, November 7th, 2022. And I urge City Council to thereafter hold a special meeting to appoint one of the next, excuse me, one of next Tuesday's non-incumbent election, election victors to fill, fill that vacancy and enjoy a smoother orientation and gain a little more experience in this office before council's budgeting process begins. Thank you. Accordingly, tonight will be the last time that I sit on this dais, and perhaps the last time I will be with any of you in these council chambers. I offer each of you my sincerest gratitude for the efforts, the sacrifices, the time and talent all city employees and administrators have given to me and our citizens during my four terms of office on City Council. As I vacate this seat, I repeat the words I expressed in 2010, when I first announced my candidacy, candidacy for election to occupy this seat, and I quote, "I do not do this because it's easy. I do not do this because it is profitable. I do not do this because it's convenient. I do it because it is right and virtuous to put the needs and interests of all of the people of Lynchburg first." I thank you so very much. I have and will continue to cherish the privilege and the honor to serve on this council and to have promoted the diverse interests of everyone in this city. In pursuit of inclusive ideas, outcomes, and representative democracy, I urge all of you and our successors to embrace the virtues of unbiased, courteous, and nonpartisan public service on this council and throughout this community. And I pray that all City Council members, both present and future, will collaborate, cooperate, and be willing to accept compromise when crafting solutions to our city's challenges. Thank you very much. May God bless our city and each and every citizen in it. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
That may be why he asked to go last. But thank you, Councilmember Nelson, for over 12 years of principled, committed service to our community. I very much hope that we will have the opportunity to, to thank you fulsomely as a council, as a community, at a date in the not-too-distant future. It would be our honor and our privilege. And I think it's telling of your, your service on this, on this body, that a former member, Councilmember Turner Perrow, has joined us here this evening. Thank you for being here as well. So this does not get you, though, out of the 7:30 meeting. So we look forward to seeing you, seeing you there. Yes, Councilmember Feraldi?
I will be as brief and expedient, recognizing the time, but I don't believe I, I can let this go, so forgive me. My heart is full yet empty. Randy, my friend, no words can adequately summarize the respect, appreciation, and gratitude I and so many others have for you and the 12 years of service you have offered this city of Lynchburg. In ways, this moment is, on your part, the culmination of a lifetime of service to the city and all that it stands for. There will be some who will praise your leaving this dais, not I. The friendship and camaraderie we have fostered these last two and a half years leads me to recognize the great loss this government and community will feel by your leaving council. On any issue, we may arrive at differing conclusions, yet never once has that forced us from being neighbors, colleagues, and friends, and nor would I expect it to ever do. This is what makes Councilmember Nelson a treasure to cherish. While one may disagree with any of your votes, stances, comments, or proposals, something we ourselves have encountered, we find ourselves ever walking together as fellow citizens. It cannot be denied the example you have set forth to all of us, constantly being true to yourself and the principles that guide you. In this charged, modern-day political environment, we all should strive to be more like Councilmember Nelson. Your tender resolve, humble spirit, and gentlemanly zeal are attributes I only wish to remotely attain or emulate. Truly, you are the consummate statesman. I pray to the Almighty that one day I may even fracturally present myself in like manner. I've often said, both to you in private and others publicly, and I'll say it again now, Randy Nelson is a picture of what I strive daily to be as a council member, albeit with a slightly different voting record, however. Though he may not realize it, he is my mentor, my confidant, and most importantly, a dear, dear friend. Randy, I know I still plan on calling you for that wise counsel and attentive ear for those times when I may not know how to move forward or if I should take a step backward, because I know that there is no more honorable and faithful representative to the people of Lynchburg. And out of that love for her citizens, your prudent word will still influence my ear and the city for years to come. I thank my God in all my remembrance of you, always in, in every prayer of mine, for you all, for you making my prayer be of joy, because of your partnership in the gospel for the first day until now, and I am sure of this, that he who began a good work in you will bring it to a completion at the day of Jesus Christ. It is right for me to feel this way about you, because I hold in you my heart, for you are all partakers with me of grace, both in the imprisonment and in the defense and confirmation of the gospel. For God is my witness, I yearn for you with all the affection of Jesus Christ, and it is my prayer that your love may abound more and more, with knowledge and all discernment, so that you may approve of what is excellent, what is pure, and what is blameless. For the day of Christ, filled with the fruit of righteousness that comes through he alone, to the glory of God, and praise be to him, Philippians 1, 3 through 11. In Christ and in sincere gratitude, thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Chris. That was a very moving statement, and you don't know how much I appreciate it. As Vice Mayor.
I would join Councilmember Nelson in calling for that special session, by the way. All right, well, thank you all very much. We look forward to seeing you back here at 7:30. Until then, we are recessed. Thank you.